I would like to start the meeting on January 7th at 6:03. Thank you, Area 58, for filming. Anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled at this time? We have Lee -- really, Bob? Are you in the audience tonight? We have the liaison from the Finance Committee here tonight, so maybe she did mention she needs to leave a little early to go to her meeting across the street, so we need to shuffle things around at some point.
Absolutely. I did give her a full budget packet, so she has exactly what we have.
Good. Awesome. Thank you. Minutes. Has anybody -- has everybody had a chance to go over the minutes from our last meeting on December 3rd?
Three zero.
Three zero. They're good, though.
They're good.
The only thing that I was wondering is, so when Lisa -- because Lisa submits them, correct, the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So Gordon had mentioned at the end noting the handouts, which is done in these minutes, which is great.
Yep.
So will she also be submitting the handouts with the minutes, or are they just there, or she can -- people can contact her and request them, the handouts, if they'd like them, or?
I don't believe we have--
Technically, the way is that you have to reference the items that were handed out, but those handouts aren't actually part of the minutes. So Lisa has to keep a copy of them if somebody asks for a file for that meeting.
Okay.
But technically, the minutes are just the minutes from the meeting, not all the handouts as well.
Okay. So this is correct in the minutes that they're listed here, but, okay, so they just email Lisa and request them if they'd like a copy of--
Somebody wants a copy of--
Okay. Thank you for answering that. Vote to approve, two minutes. I need a motion to vote to approve. Accept, whatever.
To accept the minutes as printed?
Second.
Hold on, in favor?
Aye.
Warrants are in front of me, and we'll be circulating them. Correspondence and reports. The -- oh, forgive me, I left it in my car. There was a small bill of some sort, or receipt, in the box. I'll have to bring it to you, remind me before you leave tonight. Obviously, it goes to you.
It's in your car now?
Yeah. It's in my car. I left it on my front seat. And I just wanted to take a quick moment to just remind everybody what the process is when they have an issue in the classroom here, what the proper channels to go through. So if any parent has any sort of issue with their child in the classroom, the first step is to notify the teacher. And if you don't feel like you've been sufficiently served, or your issue has been resolved, then you go to the building principal, and they -- or any member of the administration, I'm assuming Brian also.
Yes.
At that point, if you still don't feel satisfied with the resolution, you speak to the superintendent or assistant superintendent. Passing the buck. And then, at that point, obviously, the last step is to come to us at the school committee here. So I just kind of wanted to clarify those channels, because sometimes people jump around a little bit, and just want to remind everybody what the proper process is.
It's in our handbook as well.
Okay.
Just outlines the process.
Great.
Follow the change made.
Great. Thank you. Other than that, I haven't received anything from anybody, anybody else? Okay. Unfinished business? I don't have any. I'm sorry, I was trying to talk off at you all meeting. New business? I don't have any. Anyone else? Anyone like to see anything else other than the budget on the agenda for next month?
The only -- the only thing that we talked about last meeting was standing outside, talking to the parents, well, pick up, drop off.
I didn't notice today that they're not using -- they're not three lined up in three. Now, is it done over there, where they took all the trees down?
The recycled asphalt is there in the middle.
Okay.
So we found that we're getting reports that it's pushed back out to the street, then we send out the troops to do that.
Oh.
We were gonna come in and talk with the parents and ask them why they're doing pick up and drop off.
Mm-hmm.
I heard from one parent, he said that his kids are on the bus longer. There seems to be behavioral issues that come up as the kids are on the bus for a long period of time. So he said, depending upon the route, he would change -- they would change their mind whether or not to do the trip of pick up, depending upon how long the kids are on the bus.
Okay. Which has been part of our discussion, so. We can talk about that. Maybe let's not so freezing?
No, no, we should be up there.
I mean, you look pretty warm. I have a Packers hat, though. All right, well, we can revisit that. Let's talk about it. Report of standing committees. So policy, we did meet. You want to talk a little bit about it, Joy?
Sure. So about twice a year, MAS-C, which is the Mass Association -- Masses Cues its Association of School Committee, sorry about that, sends out a policy updates. And we received a set in February and in July, and we reviewed and updated our policies based on their recommendations. We met with the subcommittee. Most of the changes were just based on civil rights language, that we needed to add the words pregnancy or pregnancy-related into several policies, so it was civil rights changes. You have a packet here with the policies, if we had that policy already in our packet, with the updates added in red, or in highlighted in yellow if it's a policy that is a change of one that we currently have. So the policy subcommittee met, we reviewed the recommendations, and these are the recommendations that went through based on that subcommittee meeting. The only thing I did want to mention in here is the wellness policy. As part of the wellness policy, Jill coordinates the wellness subcommittee, and they recommended bringing forward some language that is recommended from the state regarding any advertising of food, things that are not on the approved list, the John Stalker list. I'm sorry, excuse me. Members of the subcommittee had some concerns to make sure that our athletic director was aware of that list, because we're talking about trying to put in a new billboard on our football field, on Seraco Field, the athletic field. And some of the advertisers could be a company like Dunkin' Donuts, which is not an unusual company to support, but they would not be on that wellness committee list. So Jill will reference that in her update. So the subcommittee approved just an update, we read the wellness committee, but we didn't want to add that language yet until we get clarification from our athletic director because of the potential as a funding source. We want to make sure we make good decisions on that, if that all makes sense. So what you have here are the recommendations from the policy subcommittee with the changes highlighted. The process is, you receive them. If it's okay, usually what we do is we waive the actual reading, because otherwise we literally have to read all of these. So you waive the actual reading of the policies, and then you accept as a first reading the policies. Then what happens is you can go through, you can review these, you got these in the mail, in the email. And then if you have any questions or concerns, you can contact Summers on the policy subcommittee, myself. Bob, I think you were on that, weren't you?
It's Alex.
Alex. Sorry.
I have an addition I'd like to add on this. I'll just give it to someone.
Sure. That'd be great.
Okay.
And then anything that -- any changes or recommendations that you would like to make, they can be made between the first and the second reading. We could call another policy subcommittee meeting, et cetera.
We're gonna -- do you want any way to go through the wellness?
We will eventually need one to go through the wellness, right?
Okay. Yeah, so whatever, Bob or anyone else has any edits between now and the next time we meet, just forward them along, and we'll take them to the subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
So with these, are we publishing this to the website so people know what the policy changes are, saying that we're not reading them, actually?
We have never read them. We can post them as drafts, if you like. These are not substantive changes, so, I mean, I normally wouldn't, but if you would like, we could certainly do that. Again, most of it is just adding the language pregnancy or pregnancy-related, if you look through it.
Mm-hmm.
But if you would like, we could certainly do that.
Has there been a problem with that in any of the schools with my daughter, as you probably know, had a baby when she was at Silver Lake, and she was -- she felt very welcome there?
Yes. No, there never has been. It's just -- this is just a part of our coordinated program review. It's just a requirement, a civil rights requirement.
They're safe, we're sorry.
Exactly. Always.
Applies staff as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. With that being said, who wants to do the -- so we need a motion to waive the actual reading, but accept the first reading, and then somebody kindly needs to read all of these letters.
So you want me to read them all in my motion as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I make a motion that we waive the--
Actual reading.
Actual reading.
Yep.
And accept this first reading of policies AC, ACAB, ADF, EFD, GBA, GBEBD, GCF, IJND, ILD, JV, JFAVE, JFAVF, JFF, JICH, and JFF again.
Hmm.
Check it.
How does it pass?
Oh, what?
Is that the last one?
Yeah. It's amended.
Next up is twice. What's JF?
Yeah, purpose.
JF.
JF.
Yeah, she doubled it. Sorry about that. But this is JF, not JFF. It's the very last one.
I think one's supposed to be JF.
Ooh, yes. Good catch.
So I think it's just a typo.
This one's JF?
Yeah. One's JJF, and the other one's JF.
There's just a typo on your -- oh, not on your part.
Okay, then it's a typo on her, too.
No.
No.
She just, at the top, it's a typo. And that says JF.
Oh, oh. Wait. She's right. She's right. It's a double typo.
So is --
No, but it's the same.
But was JF?
It's the same. It is the same.
So it's the same policy.
With JFF amended?
But it should be-- JF. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm gonna have JF.
And just once.
And just once.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Our office is really busy with budgets right now. Oh, come on. I know.
What, do you got like four schools or something?
I know.
Five of them?
What's up with that?
We could talk--
Do we have a second? Second?
You want a second?
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All righty. Thank you. Negotiations has not met. Nope. PAC?
They actually canceled the meeting this month.
Okay.
We haven't met since last meeting.
Youth and Rec, it's me. They had a dance in December. It was very successful. Holidays in Halifax also was fantastic. Dick Steele said he was very grateful for the help that he got from the principal and assistant principal in the building, doing everything they needed in the gym and so forth. Full-on basketball mode in the gym right now. They have town from -- they have town from 5 to 9, girls, and then boys is from 5 to 10 on Mondays, I think, and then -- or boys is Friday, girls is Monday. Yeah, because Caroline's there today. So girls is Monday, boys is Friday, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is practice from 5 to 9. Then Saturday and Sunday, the travel teams are in there, so it's like booked solid in the gym. They're looking to do the floors sometime over February vacation, I think he said. And other than that, he said that there is a dance coming up on the 12th. They had to bump them to Saturdays now instead of Friday because of all the basketball going on. And it's 5th and 6th grade, Saturday night, the 12th, apex of the door. Door's open at 6:30, music starts at 7:00. And that's it. PTO?
PTO did not meet. They have a meeting January 18th at 9:00 a.m., and--
Are you going to that one?
I will be at that one.
Capital budget? We didn't submit anything to them, so we're good. That's solved. An admin review?
No meeting.
Union 31. No meeting.
According to our calendar, we have unscheduled for February 14th, which is the same night I know. Sorry. The same night as the Silver Lake meeting.
I mean, we love you.
I know. But we might Valentine. So if people are available, that was what was on the schedule, that was voted and approved, and we would meet at 5 o'clock at Silver Lake.
Okay. That's me, and is that you, too?
Right now. It'll be quick.
At the high school?
Yes.
Trusty binder.
It shouldn't take long to handle the budget.
Oh, share across the budget?
I got --
Yeah. You and Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. No, you need 31.
No, admin review.
You need 31.
You know, I only filled it when I was on.
Oh, okay. Mr. Podrey? You're up.
Sure, because I know what we're talking about tonight, so the enrollment is that we get 6:09.
Oh, you're open enough.
So we had a couple of more meetings from last month, but also history to get out, so we'll stay at 6:09. An update for the playground, we're continuing talks with help of Elton Lake, Joe McManus, person that works for Hops. So we had him come out preliminarily to take a look at what we have down there, what our options were. So he sent us over some discounted structures and different things that we could -- would be interested in looking at. So we just kind of were back and forth a little bit about just design options. So he is putting together something for us to look at, and then we were able to have our students kind of take a look at the different structures and the different designs that he's coming up with for us, and we're going to take it step by step. We're just in waiting bid right now, just waiting for him to pull back the lessons. So we're kind of still looking at our Hops options, because we're not sure because the structures he's looking at are like last year's models. So he's got some great options, and we're also talking about what are some of the things that we can do ourselves in terms of removing sand, play structure that's there. So similar to what I think he's doing with Hops, because I know that he was talking about how Hops is community build, where the community is doing. Okay, question for him.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna do a Hisoka County fall ice structures, that will make touch, and then do a school road. Show them our library type of technology type of road.
That's kind of fun. Yeah, the kids will love that.
There's a lot of cool structures he adds, and we're just trying to see which one, because each one might have different sizes and capacities, and how many students can be on it at a recommended time, so a lot of different options. And we can custom design it if we want.
Oh, come on, Kate.
Has anyone heard anything about this one, or the funded one?
I think in the springtime, in March or April.
Is it good?
Yes.
Good.
And that's what I think it is. It's Joe McMahon, I think was the person that -- we got the name from the people that are doing Hops, so I don't need to do another race. So I believe they're moving out some of the structures that are there now, and then working on removing the stone. And we've been talking with some of the people, and they were saying that they're moving the stone out, but they're discussing about where to put it. We were just spitballing. I mean, there's that access road that goes out to the back fields, that is a mud puddle from the market lot here, goes all the way around. I don't know. So those are discussions. We don't know if we can put that much stone, because a lot of stone--
What about, like, isn't there a track that goes around the -- or there was a track? It's like a path, kind of, around the building?
Around--
No, around the baseball fields back here.
I think it's around, I think it's--
I think the problem, the big problem with it is--
It moves.
-- today's society is that that's like compacted stone dust for runners, so it's much, it's a stronger, firmer base. And on a playground, they want like pea stone, so it's softer.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think you can put that one, because if you're running on it, you could roll an ankle, or it's a liability.
Lawnmower, okay. Those things all over.
Yeah.
That's a good point. I didn't even think of that.
I mean, back there, the access road, we don't have anything. We don't plow back there, we don't have lawnmowers or anything, so but it could help, was an idea. And they offered it to us and to put it in place. Maybe a couple scoops, but not the--
Fill the bottom of your Bata Bowl there, Kate.
So we can have a couple of shows.
Bob, you're on camera, okay?
I think they are, but with the cost, many of the early days, the last year was the springtime, so.
Great.
It's just a little -- it should be great. It's exciting. Same as breakfast, I think like we mentioned, it's one of the biggest fundraisers that PTO does for us, and it was great. It's a great turnout. We're excited to continue that tradition. The concert was on the 19th. We do one during the school day, and then we do one at nighttime. Grandma Sarr does everything from soup to nuts, and she is fantastic. We love the fact that she does it. She gets the chorus and ball, and it's just, it's awesome. It's great. But she picks a theme. Same as shirt. Perfect. Maybe she's got a theme, though.
What was the theme? I was there, too, and I don't even remember. But I did notice there were a lot more dancers this year, which was kind of cool.
And that, I believe, is from the students themselves. One year, I think there was a group of students that kind of took it upon themselves and said, hey, we have an act. So each year, it's a couple of them.
Yeah. Don't forget Mr. Howe's participation, and he's not here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Mr. Howe is great. He's our in-house tech. I think he does a great job. And he does it for grad, Scott does it for graduation as well. So he's in the middle of the sentence, teaching at the University of Texas, but he also has some backup. The donation that we have, we have a bunch of donations that we participated during the season. One that we do is the giving tree that you see in the lobby. We have donated hats and scarves. It's over 150. We have to like keep track of the tree that like starts to lean over and falls in the lobbies. And those donations go to the fundraising area, to the Coalition for the Homeless. We also do, the staff here, they do a holiday donation to families. It's kind of almost like a adopt a family kind of, we do this giving tree, and it's all named our names, but they give us ideas and things that we're looking for. So that's always a huge success that people are looking for every year. And then the, I think it's the Tri-Town Sonic Lodge that goes, and they pick up all these toys, and it's fantastic. And we just wait for it every year, and he comes, and he calls, and he says, toys are ready, come get them. We go and get them, bring them back here, and then Claire, Ellen, and Matt, they put them all together for the families that we are donating them to, and they come and they pick them up on the date of our vacation. It's great. It's great. You have to wrap. We do not wrap. We organize and coordinate which families that we're working with, and we'll do that event. So we kind of sort and organize which ages of families, so that's how we do it. And Claire, the whole of our house, does kind of taste drug at night. Up there on those seven doors is chipping away. We did get some shades in here, much needed from because of the sun that comes through, so that was, at least that was kind of a great shade. No, 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 no.
Oh, Bob, please.
But again, we're just chipping away at the doodle that's hanging out here in the doors sometime in the evening.
Did you guys have your meeting on the 3rd?
We did.
You did? Okay.
It's the summer, is it correct?
Because I emailed Charlie for like a synopsis, and he said he was sick. He wasn't still.
It was August?
I don't know. I didn't know what happened.
In additional to the doors.
Are they still coming on the 17th?
No.
They're later.
Excuse me. September, they said.
Yeah. Bite your tongue.
Oh, August of 2018, or so?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well.
So is the plan for February vacation at this point?
At this point.
Way down. Each time, we just wait for the delivery.
Yeah.
That's, if the delivery's there, we'll do whatever. It was night, we were talking nighttime, we were talking, we'd get it, whatever it needs.
We need the delivery, and then once we have the delivery, also to finish the punch list. So we got an extension on the temporary--
It's too good of arguments.
Yeah. So it's getting there, but it's, don't hold your breath. You don't look good in blue.
Yep.
They are going out to bid on the sprinkler system. Oh, good. Yep. And they are doing a walkthrough, or have done a walkthrough?
No.
It's coming up. I don't remember what the date was. Soon. But that's, that is in process.
Okay. That's good. Let's get it out nice and early.
Yep.
Absolutely. Is that it? For you?
Yeah.
Yeah. We should probably do Christine, and then maybe we can swap the budget--
Sure. Yeah, should that. Melinda get a chance to hear it.
Well, I'm going to be brief. I just wanted to look at the changes that have happened in our financials this last month. Really, the only changes are our homeless transportation has grown. We were deficit bound, just under $2,000, and that's through December activity, so I expect that will continue to grow. And then we have one tutoring account, Special Education Area, that has grown. We've had a unique situation where students need to be placed, so we're providing some tutoring until that happens. And then that, there have been no changes. Unless there are any questions. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
That was pretty--
Kim, it's--
Okay.
Okay.
Dive into the budget.
Budget, yeah. All right. So you have, all of you have a yellow folder, and I just wanted to sort of go through and let you know what is in the yellow folder. On the left side, and Melinda also has a folder from the Finance Committee, and she's[1619.45]
That's it, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
That was pretty.
Okay, let's dive into the budget, yeah.
All right. So you have, all of you have a yellow folder and I just wanted to sort of go through and let you know what is in the yellow folder. On the left side, and Melinda also has a folder in the finance committee and she's going to take the one back for selectmen. So they also will have all the exact same information we all have. So on the left is basically information to support the budget and it's basically reference material for you. So you have the timeline that we gave out in the fall, sort of going through how we build the process. You have Steve's tech plan that he presented to you for November, I believe it was. You have Melissa's budget for the curriculum that she talked about in October, Melissa Farrell. You have Marie's special education presentation that went through the number of students we have that are out of district placements, et cetera. You have some graphs that help you understand how we have changed over the years. The first graph are the number of students over the last 10 years in Halifax. So you can see from 2009, we had 684 students in Halifax and now in 2019, we have 608. So you can see we went down as low as 545, but we have been increasing again over the last few years. And then you can see for grades seven through 12, although I realize it may not impact Halifax as directly, it gives you a sense of where the numbers are for Halifax. And again, on the secondary level, Halifax went from 590 students in '09 down to 507 in '19. So it just gives you again, some idea of the students overall. The second one was one that some people have asked a little bit about is the number of students who choose homeschooling. And I just thought it would be some interesting information for you. And again, right now Halifax has six students who are currently homeschooled. Halifax ranges basically from a low of one up through, I think the highest we've ever had is eight. So it's a little bit up and down, some of it depends on families and it's a family's personal choice. And then you can see also homeschool enrollment for the secondary level. And then the last page is just our planning for success, which is sort of what we are building our budget on is our focus and our goals for the district as a whole. So that's all the information that's on the left side. Does anybody have any questions about that information? Again, that's really just sort of reference material, but having it all in one place, hopefully will make your life a little bit easier.
Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, no worries.
I understand that you're kind of limited in what you can share and I appreciate you doing what you can for it.
Sure. So on the right side is the meat of the budget and that's the part that you're probably most interested in. Kane put together a budget proposal and we can sort of speak to that a little bit. He used the brand new logo, which is really quite fun. I quite enjoy it, I have to say. Really, the kids did, the kids did a great job designing that. I quite like it. So Kane talked a little bit about, you know, his priority and the enrollment and the focus. And I did just want to say right up front, I'm really proud of Kane. He did not ask for the laminating machine this year. He did a really good job. It was difficult, poster machine? Poster machine, yeah. He did not ask for the poster machine. It was tough, but he did get over himself there. You can see the enrollment from 18, 19 through 19, 20. Again, our hope is to maintain the four teachers per grade level. We have good class sizes in Halifax. We're estimating that the kindergarten enrollment will be pretty close to what it is this year. There is a bubble, which next year will be in second and third grade. Those classes, as you can see, are a little bit bigger, but again, we still have pretty reasonable class sizes and our hope is to just maintain that. The one thing I did want to mention is in transportation, we are asking for an additional bus and it is something that we would really like you to consider. It is not in the budget, okay? I just want to stress that. It is not in the budget because that is a separate issue that is above level service, which is, the town asks for us to present a level service budget. If we were to get an additional bus, the cost would be approximately $65,000 because it would not be a shared cost bus. What that means is we do not need an additional bus for Silver Lake. Do you need a pen? I have plenty. Okay. We do not need an additional bus for Silver Lake, so it would only be used for Halifax. So you would have to pay the full cost of the bus. All of the elementary buses that we currently have are shared with Silver Lake, so Halifax only has to pay half the cost. All right, so if Halifax chose to purchase an additional bus, again, it's the full cost of a bus. So it's steep. Yes?
Would be able to use that bus for field trips, I suppose?
If, I believe, it's a great question, but I believe they always charge additional. When we pay for buses, we only pay for the runs. I've never, I don't know if we could try and cut a deal like that. I've never seen them be willing to do that, but I suppose. Yeah, no, it's a great idea. It's a great idea, but we don't have access to a bus all day. All we have for is the two runs.
And we do, when we do use that for field trips, well, what's an additional?
We've always had to pay for additionally for field trips.
What's field trips? They get a fit for classrooms for the kids usually.
Maybe 400? It's about 400, 400 to 600, yeah, a bus.
Which is a big chunk of like a tuition if you were to go somehow because you're paying for plantation.
So again, the cost is 65,000. It is not in the budget, again, because that is above level service, which is, you know, the town asks us to present level service. Technology, one of the things I did want to mention is, and I sent an email to Charlie today, is one of the things that we would like to ask for is a technology warrant article. The switches in the building all need to be replaced. Steve had mentioned that when he was in here before. So I did send Charlie today to warrant articles and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But again, the technology is just the usual amounts that we're asking for. On the budget, Steve did mention that if the town needs to take some cuts, we may be able to look at the REAP grant to sort of shave off some of the edges for technology when we get to that point as part of our budget building process. The math program, when Melissa Farrell came in, I think we talked a lot about that we are currently looking at different math programs. The math materials are being piloted by teachers throughout the district right now. We do not know which program will be decided upon. We have a placeholder in the budget of $73,000. That would be the maximum amount. Hopefully, it would be a little less than that, but that is a cost factor. That is currently in the budget because we do have to have a math program. And that would be something that you can purchase it for, and that would be a six-year, they replace it every year, the workbook, so it's a six-year program. If we were to purchase it per year, it's incredibly more expensive. It's like $16.90 a year, so it's a waste of money. The best and the most efficient way is to purchase it for the six-year. I keep coming up with lease, but that's not the word I'm looking for.
Subscription?
There you go, that's better. Thank you. I'm looking at new cars. Sorry, didn't get past the lease idea. So that's currently going on. We will know that before the budget is decided, but right now, we're not at that point, okay? But again, the 73,000 is in the budget and that is more than a 1% increase in the budget, just so you understand.
Just the math books alone.
Just the math books alone. So that is, when you see the budget, you'll notice that. In Halifax, we have one known retirement of a teacher that is going out. Those savings have been built into the budget. We also have the possibility of another one, but it isn't definitive and until I have that piece of paper in my hand, I do not count it, okay? Obviously, that would not be a good choice on my part to take money out when we don't have the money there. So again, Kane put at the bottom, the following items are not included, the additional bus. We've talked about trying to do some upgrades in the bathroom. That's not in here again. The other item, and again, these are things that would be helpful to have. It's not that we can't run the school without them. We have a computer lab and we do not have air conditioning in there. It is certainly harder on computers when they are not, you know, computers produce a lot of heat, so it would certainly be helpful if that room was air conditioned. But again, that is not something that I would consider life-threatening. If we had to make decisions, the bus would certainly be one I think that the parents would be more appreciative of. Excuse me. And then Kane just has the, pardon me?
We just moved a chunk of our network into the computer lab.
Right.
It used to be in the custodian office for some reason.
Yeah, we have no idea why.
So we moved up all the wires and things to the computer lab, so it's a computer lab that handles.
Got some network in it. And then we have the capital plan and we just highlighted in yellow the things that are done. So now for the actual budget. So the first set of papers, the ones that is smaller, are the summaries of all the different lines. At this point, we have not had a chance yet to update my office, so you'll see the shared costs. Those numbers are not updated yet. Once those are updated, those will be put in. We just carried forward the numbers that were in last year, so there will be some slight increases in those areas. Oftentimes, you know, Halifax is first on the docket, so we, there's lots of moving pieces happening simultaneously, but we don't have a final number there yet. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we don't have any buybacks this year. You may remember last year, we had a teacher buyback. That was an extra $23-ish thousand, so that was helpful that we don't have that this year. We do have two teachers who are receiving longevity. That's only, it's about $3,000 a teacher that's in there. We have no rental income. You may remember, I have mentioned that PAC will be moving out, so we don't have that $11,137. You'll see that about three quarters of the way down the page, that is not carried forward for this year. So we have that loss of income. We were taking that off this year. I already mentioned the math textbooks and that, putting that math textbooks in is adding over 1% into the budget in terms of our increase. The bus is not included and I just wanted to mention that circuit breaker, we put in at 60% reimbursement, okay? So if you go to the end page, which is, if you just flip over the first part, the grand total for a regular day is a 4.35% increase. Again, over 1% of that increase is the math textbooks, okay? Last year's budget was 5422, so a benefit, $54,000 increase would be 1%. The math textbooks are 73, so that's a good portion of your increase. So if you took the math textbooks off, it's just over a 3% increase.
I think we were like two, does that make sense? Two and a half last year?
The increase last?
Last year was...
We don't need actual, I'm just thinking. Think it started at four and we whittled it down to like two something.
Yep, the town last year asked us to take pretty substantial cuts, which we did.
Yes. So if you take out the math textbooks, we're actually in better shape.
Yes, exactly.
At the start this year than we were last year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, we're very good. And for special education, I wanted you to notice, and that's again, the second page one at the top. Special education transportation, as Marie has mentioned, we have struggled a little bit. Our main provider was bought by another company. We are still working our way through the dependability of that. So that's where the majority of the increases are. Our actual special ed tuition is up relatively speaking, a small amount, only $32,000. So that's really good news. Again, we, the way Marie has been building the programs, we've been able to keep the cost down, we've been able to keep more students in district. So that increase is good. It's only a 1.76 increase. Vocational education, at this point, again, just to remind everyone, students can apply through April 1st and we do not have any known students applying. We would anticipate we would get a couple, but at this point, that number has just been carried forward. So that does not include spaces for any potential additional students.
We just had, we do have three students graduate. One has withdrawn and the other two are graduating this year. So we have three slots.
Well, we already know of two filled though.
Correct, I'm just saying that's...
So, somebody was asking me about this today. We have a set number of slots that we can offer our students or if they want to go to a program at the South Shore Vo-Tech and we do not offer it Silver Lake, we are obligated to send them to that program?
If they get accepted.
If they get accepted.
After ninth grade.
Okay, so there's not like a cap on the number of students? Interesting.
There's a cap for schools that they have, like the South Shore Vo-Tech doesn't have to pack the students in.
They don't have to, they're accepted.
But that's why it's accepted.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's not on our end, it's on their end?
Exactly.
Somebody was telling me, I don't know if this is accurate, that Whitman Hansen can take 16 of, 16 students. Give the Vo-Tech 16 students, so it's eight from Hansen, eight from Whitman and they're like, how many does Halifax, slots does Halifax have? And I go, well, I think...
Whitman Hansen is a part of South Shore region, so vocational, so they pay an assessment. So maybe there were assessments based on that a lot.
Okay, so it's just a holder for, yeah, they're a member, they're a member district.
You send 20, 30 kids to the Vo-Tech area, at least.
And there's a big push in state to send students to Vo-Tech programs.
And Whitman Hansen High School doesn't really offer.
Well, that was part of her conversation, is we offer a lot at Silver Lake, that they don't offer at Whitman Hansen. So, okay, I was just curious.
And the comments made at the finance committee with the selectmen was to keep the number as we have proposed here. Just so...
For vocational.
For terms, in terms of...
The budget.
Making the budget, right, got it.
So again, this is your summary, which goes through the three different areas, the way the town votes it. So it's regular day, special education, which is the out of district and the transportation, and then vocational. Those are our three votes. So the next packet that you have is the expenditure by function. I'm not sure how you would like to proceed, if you'd like to take some time to digest this. I don't know if the finance committee has any information. I know you need to go in a minute. If there's any information you can share with us or...
We actually haven't met since the middle of December, so it's actually gonna be our first meeting in a few weeks. So, we'll do basic housing stuff tonight, I think, and then we'll start scheduling and vote, so we'll definitely let everyone know well in advance we're gonna talk about your budget. And if I either come in and talk about it, I'll be your liaison, so I'll be in touch as well.
Okay.
I can't come, but if it's comfortable, we'll come.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. Awesome, thank you.
Just before the Silver Lake meeting?
Silver Lake is Thursday night, Melinda?
Okay.
If you're available, at 6 o'clock at the high school?
Okay, I should be able to come a little bit ahead of schedule with a week of personnel that night, too, I think.
Okay, we're gonna move the budget right up to the beginning after a couple of short
We try to make two, like a backup for each of us with these figures of the items, so if I can't be there, then Bill or Fred will be.
Okay, good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for having me.
What's the committee's pleasure?
I think in the past, we've sort of taken a minute to look at every page and then sort of do it that way, rather than, you know, go through every single line, but if there's a line on the page that jumps out to anybody and they want to talk about it, now would be the best time to start dissecting it.
So can I make a recommendation that we hope until we have some updated shared cost information?
For the, for page one or for the entire?
To go through the whole thing.
So what would you like, what is your recommendation, what we do tonight? We just digest, bring it home and digest it?
I think everyone should look through it and then come back with questions. I don't think it makes sense to go through line by line today because we're gonna have to do the same thing in February and we're gonna have to do the same thing in March when we get an idea of what's going on with the Silver Lake budget and what's happening with all the other town budgets.
Okay.
Because if we go through and we start, you know, looking at everything right now, we're gonna have more questions and we're gonna have to look deeper inside the budget in the next two weeks.
Okay, well, about this, I'm with you, but I think if there's anything that stands out to anybody right now, that's had a chance to kind of comb through this a little bit, that it wouldn't hurt to ask a few questions now. And then, I agree with you though, because if we're gonna start moving things around, it doesn't make sense if we have empty spaces, you know?
Because we have zeros in there for some items right now. We know that's not...
Right, it's, again, our...
Is there an increase? We do carry over the 19.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As a place of...
All right, so let's give ourselves just a couple of minutes to kind of go through. If anything jumps out to anybody, we can talk about it and then if not, we can take it home, digest it, pick through it, come back and talk about it some more next month. Because next month is our public budget hearing, correct?
Correct, yep.
Do you want us to kind of throw things at it?
Just let them look at it.
All right, so I do have a question.
Oh, that's weird.
It's already talked about, it's already talked about. The increase for the special ed transportation, that's because of the new service.
That's an influence of it. What they've done is they've taken a look at their current conditions and added a percent on top of that. So it's based on what's happening right now.
With the current student population?
Correct.
Why did the electricity allowance go down by $10,000?
It decreased electricity because in the FY '19 budget, I included a factor for that additional charge we're paying for the...
That's coming off.
The town as of June paid that off.
Oh, great.
So it's not our electrical anymore. And I looked at our year-to-date, we do a little bit of creating the budget for utilities, we look at year-to-date actual and it's backfilled with the prior year's actual to see, and then if there are any other changes, do we have new gas card or new electric contract? So I believe we could reduce about $10,000 still to accommodate.
That was the green?
Yes.
Changes that wasn't supposed to be posted?
That was the one.
If I know from sitting at that, then to the one before... So, just for the regular day and the special ed increases, we're looking at, that's the grand total. The grand total includes the special ed.
The grand...
The very end?
The two-page.
That is, does not include out of district special education, out of district education. So that's everything within this building.
So the, so it's a 236,023 increase, and then the special ed is 126,763. And then vocational is flat. So it's 362,786.
That sounds about right.
So the, just so everyone's aware, prop two and a half is approximately $400,000. So we are going to get pushback on the budget.
Absolutely.
Prop two and a half is 400, you said?
Prop two and a half is 400.
And what is our number, two?
367. Ooh.
362 is the town increase. 362,000.
So we are going to get pushback on that. But, I mean, with 126, almost 127 is special ed, that is, we have no control. I mean, there's movement, there's really no...
Right. And again, this is, you know, and I know you know this, but just for the community, the numbers are, as of this moment, you know, special education evolves. What we did, as Christine explained, with the special ed transportation, which is where the majority of the increase is, is we added a percentage increase based on what we have. You know, if we're lucky, over the next couple of months, hopefully, we'll have a better sense of what a real number is for that. But the number that, the numbers that we have in the actual out of district tuition, which had been the main concern of the towns, that is a very low increase. And I think it really speaks to the work that we've done developing in-house programs.
Though, only one question adds about the special ed budget, was with the collaborative leaving the space?
Yep.
Is there ability to try to service some more students in this building with a different program?
There are other collaboratives. We could see if they were interested in renting space, and we're also always looking at whether or not we need to develop additional programs.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a great room. As a matter of fact, I think it's a lot nicer than my office. I keep a really good eye on you, so I might be moving in. Ooh, I'm here. So, yeah, no, it's a great room. I mean, it truly is. It's a wonderful room. I mean, it's big, it's sunny, it's got a bathroom. It's an absolute great room, so.
But, you know, to Gordon's point, I think it's, it's important to kind of always keep that on our radar.
Absolutely.
Especially, even just sending kids to Kingston, that's the transportation cost.
Yep.
If we can keep them here.
Yep, absolutely.
I think even, you know, one might argue, without looking at the raw numbers, that, you know, hiring an extra body to be in the building and be in that space and service our children here, not only financially, but for the benefit of the students, could be, you know, a plus all around, I think.
Yep. Marie does a really nice job of keeping everything on the radar, so it isn't that we haven't thought of it. But it's always good to see other people think the same way.
Remember, you brought to us last year, maybe the year before, the idea of a stabilization for special education?
Mm-hmm.
Do the other towns in our district have it? Does Silver Lake, Dennett, and Kingston, did they approve that, or are we the only town that does not have that?
Silver Lake doesn't have it because they do the out of district tuition, but Kingston voted it and Dennett voted it. So Halifax is the only town that did not vote it.
Were you, and were you two on the committee when we had that conversation?
No. I don't think, I think those are your reforming.
So, do you want to briefly just mention it?
Sure.
Just very briefly?
The idea of it?
Just, just to have the conversation about it?
I think the premise is to have a stabilization fund for those towns when events happen that are beyond your control and that would really just create habit with your budget. So it gives you the opportunity to have some funds set aside in that to be used by the school department, by the town, if needed. But you would have to fund that amount, and there are limitations on how much you can fund that amount.
Can't be more than 5 percent of your budget. And what happens is you have to have it listed in your budget, so we would need to put a line in that says special education stabilization fund. We could just put in $1,000, say, just to have a line item there. Then at the end of the year, school committees have line item autonomy, so if we didn't expend the whole budget, rather than return it to the town, you could put it in the special ed stabilization fund, which is sort of like, as Christine said, in case something went really wrong. The town of Halifax has always been very supportive of our budget and understanding of special education. Their feeling was, they'd rather get the money back to be able to use it, and that if we need it, they will provide us with what is needed for the students. How'd I do?
Good. The other thing I'm wondering, though, is, is you said, like, use it in an emergency, but could we use it to fund this transportation increase because it's part of special ed, or does it have to be like, all of a sudden, we have this outrageous expense, or?
I...
I don't know what the parameters are on what makes it a crisis or emergency.
Yeah. But in order to access it, you need a vote from the school committee and a vote from the selectmen.
Correct. Yep. It doesn't have to go before town meeting. Once the fund is established, the selectmen and school committee would work to when to access it. So if we had a year that the town was having a hard time, transportation went up, I believe that would be a reasonable request, but I, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared. I believe that to be true.
No, I just, it just popped out of my head. I was just thinking about it again.
But it's, you know, again, I, I think Kingston and Dennett both felt confident. I mean, I, you know, not that they haven't always been supportive also, but I think they liked the concept of having that sort of safety net there. So that's, you know, it is in both of those budgets, but, you know, and again, you know, each town chooses to do things differently. But I personally think it's a great idea, you know, but, but again, I probably always want to make sure, you know, I can pay my bills, so, details. But, you know, if, if you want, at this point, you can take some time and look through this. I don't disagree that we'll probably need to make some budget cuts. I guess my question to you is, do you want to give us some sense of a number, and we could sort of go back and look at some things? Do you want to wait until we get more feedback from the town and see where we go from there?
I think I, I personally, I'd rather wait to get more feedback from the town.
That works for me. I'm pretty happy with that idea.
Just to Gordon's point, that I don't want to have a conversation and have the same conversation next month.
Okay.
I mean, I've been through the budget cycle for eight or nine years, and...
Go for this guy.
Well, I mean, it just, it comes down to, you have to make the budget work come March, so making changes now doesn't make sense, because you don't know what the numbers are.
Right.
Yep.
Exactly.
Last year, in November, we thought everything was going to be hunky-dory, and then the numbers came in, and the sky was falling from February to the middle of March.
Yep.
And then we, we made cuts here, we had town meeting, and then there was a special town meeting, and there was no issue with money, so I don't think that we should be doing anything until we have some real firm data on what's going on with the rest of the departments.
Okay. That sounds great. Well, thank you.
I agree.
Again, if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to Christine, myself, Kane, with anything that's there. But hopefully, this will, you'll view this as a thorough packet. I think it has everything in it that you need. I really want to thank Kane and Brian. We had lots of meetings beforehand. We already, you know, have gone through this several times, and I thought they did a great job putting everything together. If I could, I just wanted to mention the Warren articles. I started talking a little bit about that. So this is what I put together today, and I'm sure Charlie will clean it up for me, but he, he did ask for them to be to him by today. So the first Warren article I put together was to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $16,000 to replace Halifax Elementary School network switches or take any action thereon. And that would be proposed by you, the school committee. Okay? So again, it's just replacing the switches in our building. In terms of information, with the exception of two switches, we had to replace due to failure. They are all seven years or older and are end of life and are no longer supported. The total cost of this project is approximately $32,000, and we have applied for E-rate funding, which should cover 50 percent of the cost, which would bring the request to $16,000. So we've already applied for the E-rate funding with the hope that the town would support the Warren article for $16,000. We do not believe switches would be covered under the REAP grant, just in case anybody, that's considered internal, I don't know, wiring? I don't know what you call it, but whatever.
Oh.
Yeah. The, the next article would be for funding a part-time school resource officer for Silver Lake Middle School. That is not necessarily directly impacting the school committee, but here, but it will be for Silver Lake, and I just wanted you to be aware of it, because the kids here all go up to this school. So just in terms of information, before I present the article, so the town of Kingston funded a part-time, half-time school resource officer for four years, completely out of the Kingston Police Department budget. This year, they fully funded a school resource officer out of the Kingston Police Department budget, okay? Now, obviously, that police officer does not just work with Kingston students, so they're helping and securing the building for all students within the building. The school committee has really tried to focus on safety and security, as all the school committees have, in all of the buildings. Right now, we have a full-time officer, but they're trying to cover the high school, which has about, close to 1,200 kids, and the middle school, which has about 540. That's a, that's a lot of building and a lot of students for one full-time officer. And again, before that, we only had half-time. So what we'd like to do is to have the person we have, Officer Allen, be just stationed at the high school and get a half-time officer for the middle school, okay? That's what the article is for. That's what we'd like to bring forward. I've been working with the police chiefs, they're all very supportive. Your new police chief is great, by the way. Seems like a really good guy. And it would be outside of any of the school's budgets. This would be an intermunicipal agreement between Halifax, Plimpton, and the Kingston Police Department. It would be totally outside of the school budgets. We don't pay for them, they're not my officers. They're not my people.
So is Plimpton going to pay the other half?
Yes. Well, Plimpton was seen amenable to it, so I mean, I haven't been opposing it.
Or opposing that, yeah.
Yes. Yep. So the idea is it would be $50,000 for the part-time officer. It's all based on overtime, it's not their full-time job. That's how it had been funded for four years, okay? Because otherwise, they'd have to try to hire a whole officer, and the problem is, is if the town's backed out or if something happened, what's Kingston supposed to do with this police officer they've hired? So by doing it part-time, overtime, that works better for the police department, to sort of make sure this is going to work. So the idea of this is that we would develop an intermunicipal agreement, and the financial split would be based on student enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
It's $50,000 total.
Total. So chatting with Charlie, mathematically, I was originally saying 30, 20, looks like it would probably be more 36, 14. So the, the actual wording, and this is just my attempt, by the way, and I know this will be corrected, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available sums, the sum of $36,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School or take any action thereon. And again, that would be proposed by Silver Lake. Yep.
Question. So the officer is going to be assigned during the entire time the school was open?
For the hours that are considered part-time. It's not...
Like 30 hours a week?
Probably closer to 20.
Okay. And that's, is there going to be rotating officers?
No. We would like just one person so that they can develop a relationship with the kids. That's how we had the one for four years. It was the same person for four years.
That's what I'm saying, like, that's not going to cause a union with the police department.
No, no, they, they sort of posted as a position, and it was called a school liaison, because it's outside of the union contract. A school resource officer is defined within their contract. A school liaison is not.
Really?
Yes. It's sort of an outside the contract.
Yeah.
It, it, we had somebody who was there for four years. He did a great job, Officer Marshall, I don't know if you ever met him or not, just a great guy. But when it became a full-time position, he, he didn't want that. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Again, that's not a Halifax article that would be brought forward by Silver Lake. I, actually, we'll need a Halifax/Silver Lake person to bring that up. But I, I just wanted you to be aware that I have sent two Warren articles to Charlie, and they were due today. Okay? And then, did I have anything else? I don't remember. The building projects we talked about.
Yeah.
It's happening.
Next June.
Yeah.
Next June.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you. Did I forget anything, by the way?
I think this goes that way.
Highlights? Okay. So, okay, Ms. Pro.
So the wellness committee reviewed the wellness policy, and as Superintendent Blackwood mentioned, will be looking into whether or not it will have an impact on the scoreboard and in terms of the plans for marketing in that way. We will be offering a second on-campus sheltered English immersion endorsement class for faculty, and that will be starting on January 15th.
I took the first one, and then the last one.
Isn't that great?
Isn't that great?
I really love Lana. She's so much fun.
Took me with the West, Halifax, and then...
There we go.
We appreciate her willingness to serve as the instructor, because it's really been wonderful for our faculty.
It's a huge, yeah.
It's like 30, that's a mess. It's a lot of work. She did a great job.
Yeah.
Representatives from each of our schools attended the social thinking conference, and educators focused on social learning challenges that students face and strategies to help students communicate more effectively socially, problem solve, and ultimately build I consulted with Melissa Farrell and Melissa Fontaine regarding their needs in terms of incorporating the new history and civics standards, and applied for a grant. It's a competitive grant for $10,000 that would allow us to have up to 26 teachers working and participating in understanding by design, lesson planning, to help develop a scope and sequence, to further influence lesson plan design. We are not a high-needs district, so our chances are not particularly good, but we applied anyways, because you never know. And so we're hopeful, and regardless, we have begun plans for how we're going to begin to integrate the new standards. But this grant certainly would help us to really push forward in a, in a big way, to get the project started. applied anyways, because you never know. And so we're, we're hopeful, and regardless, we have begun plans for how we're going to begin to integrate the new standards. But this grant certainly would help us to really push forward in a, in a big way to get the project started. And we have, right now, our PD council, our wellness council, and our administrative team, all working together to help plan our February professional development day. Our plan is to have a common presentation for grade-level groups to work across the district on that day, to provide a wellness opportunity, and then provide time for teachers to take what they learned in their morning session, to incorporate self-awareness and self-management strategies into existing lesson plans. So that's our February plan that we're working on right now. Thank you. Any questions?
That's all you have for us?
That's it today.
All right. Thank you. Are we done? I think we are. I think of that. Well, I mean, for our regular meeting. Yeah. Well, officially.
For those tuning in at home.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn regular session to open executive session, only to return to regular session to adjourn the meeting. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Very good. Nailing it today. Okay.
Then you may go to the microphone.
I?
Stealing my thunder, Gordon. I was doing so good.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
So moved.
No, it's already been moved. Just say aye. Allison?
Yes, aye.
Gordon?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right.